All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. Item two, adjust agenda. Are there any agenda adjustments? Okay, approved meeting minutes. Everybody get a copy of March meeting minutes. Just wait for someone to make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Right? Okay, motion is passed. Dear citizens, do we have anybody other than Bruce on Zoom? Nope. Hey Bruce.
Hi Tim.
Hi.
How's everyone?
Hi.
Good.
Hi.
All good.
How you doing Bruce?
Good.
Okay, we hear you loud and clear. Okay, so Jason is here to, Jason Rasmussen, to present the review updates to the drought subdivision regulations.
Yeah, so there's at least two different versions floating around, so I hope we don't get confused about what page we're on and all that kind of stuff. But I thought I'd walk through changes and just see if there's any questions and certainly happy to make any further changes if need be. So what I was really trying to basically do was address the stuff we talked about at the last time, but then a few other things came up. So just want to talk about that as we, as we go through this. In Article one, that under section 1.2, that's, I think, the changes that you had made. I did touch that, so I think we're good there.
Yep.
If there's any further conversations we go through, I'll pause periodically. Under section 1.3, I didn't make any changes. I think we've talked about this before. But I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, if you're not aware, so in state law, the select board is authorized to adopt subdivision. My understanding is that everybody involved wants adoption by town meeting, which is okay.
Right.
Just want to throw that out there. Select board adoption is sort of the default.
Sure.
You can do it the other way.
Right.
That's what we've written in here, is that it would be by Australian ballot, by town meeting.
Right. Yeah, we're assuming the select board. That's what they generally do. They send it off.
And, yeah, so I just wanted to flag that. In subsection C, under section 1.3, I discovered like, oh, that doesn't make sense. So what this is really talking about is if you're, if the town was amending an existing subdivision by law, there's this weird thing where anything, any application that comes in during that hearing period for the adoption process, you gotta review them through both, your existing regulations and the new proposed ones. It doesn't matter, you don't have subdivision. So I just got rid of that stuff. I just felt, it just didn't make any sense in your situation.
Okay.
Unless there's other comments on that. Now, in the future, that would make some sense if these get adopted, but I figured, let's keep it as simple as we can at this point. The section 1.4 below that is waivers that got moved. It was in the back of the document, it got moved up. There's no changes to the language except for the section number, and I just left it as is, other than that. And then section 1.5, I think that was a change that you folks made based on another town subdivision that I'm forgetting, but it's all good. I think that works fine. A little more detail there.
Oh, right, right.
So is there any, any questions, comments, changes on that article one, before we move on? Okay. So now under Article two, I'm starting on page four. I'm not sure whether, maybe others have different pages. So I didn't really make any changes here, but under section 2.2, there was a comment, you know, discuss minor classification versus major. I think there was some rewording the last time around, and just to be clear, minor is two new lots, total of three, I guess, in the way I'm thinking about it.
Right.
Major would be three new lots or a total of four. We're still good with that?
Yep.
Okay. So I, under section 2.4, I just kind of reformulated some things to kind of be consistent with how I was doing it already in the other sections. So we're adding in sketch plan review here, and I added some stuff, and I don't know if folks have had a chance to read it, but I was taking what was in there before. I was putting the application requirements in here. I did add a part to the table in there, and then I did add further in sort of the sketch plan review process. So it kind of split out what you had before to two sections and built on it a little bit. Are there any questions on that section 2.4A stuff? So this is where, if you're doing a sketch plan review, this is what you gotta submit as a, as a complete application. And I left most of it as is. I did delete the waiver piece. So if you scroll on, further onto page six, there's some strikeouts of the language that you folks inserted the last time. Most of that's all still in here, but I did delete the waiver and I can add it back in. One of the things I was thinking with sketch plan reviews, you know, you sort of want it to be this informal process. One of the things that sometimes happens is other towns will issue like a, more of a decision at the end of it, and that becomes appealable, so they could, you know, the applicant might not like it, they could appeal it, and, you know, maybe end up in court or wherever. So I was trying to just keep this really informal, and, you know, could somebody try to appeal this? Probably. But I'm trying to keep it really informal, so that you can just talk to an applicant before they submit the final application and work through anything, any changes. So that was the reason I got rid of the waiver provision, because I thought that was going to be sort of an appealable decision type thing. However, I'm happy to change it back. I left, I think I left pretty much everything else more or less in there. Is that okay? Or are there any concerns with that?
I think it's good, because if, say they come in with a sketch plan review, rather than having appeal, we can make comments, basically. Go back to the drawing board.
Yeah, you're basically just giving recommendations, so to speak, and then they go back, make a few changes, and they come back for the final review. Hopefully it helps the process, but anyway, that was my thought process here. Happy to change it back.
So if I understand, the waiver was removed just in this section for the sketch plan, but it still remains in the document?
Yes, absolutely. You would do, I think, in my way of thinking, and you can, we can go put it back in there, sketch plan, you wouldn't really talk about, you wouldn't approve any kind of a waiver. But you could talk about, well, I want these kind of waivers, and, you know, you can talk about some things, you can make recommendations. When you come back for the full application, you should, you know, write out what waivers you're asking for, you know, that kind of detail.
Yeah, we know the decision at the, at the sketch plan review. It'll just basically be a discussion.
Right.
We, we make recommendations, we help them get through it, then they put in their, their real application, and then that can be a decision.
That was my thinking, if that works for you.
Saves a step and a lot of back and forth.
Keeps it a little, you know, more cordial in things too, I think, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Then my other question for you here in particular is, there's a little box there on page five. So what I was thinking about was sending people to these online mapping programs. And so instead of hiring a surveyor and doing all this expensive stuff upfront, why don't they just get on there? There's parcel maps on there, there's wetlands, there's all kinds of data on there already.
Oh yeah.
They can get in there and play with it, make a little map, or print off a base map and then sketch on it. So I think I was trying to keep it really easy and cheap for people.
Yeah.
Does that work? Okay?
It'd also be more consistent.
I noticed that, I was like.
Be more consistent this way too.
That's right.
From one to another.
And chose the abutters as well, and their names, and all of that.
Got everything.
For some people who maybe are computer people, hopefully, you know, if adopted, somebody would be the administrative person, whether it's somebody from our office or not, my thinking is that person would help somebody like that through this step.
Sounds good so far.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very simple to create a base map.
It's really easy.
Really easy, yeah.
It's really easy, yeah.
Yep.
So there's that. So page six, basically I was just renumbering A to B, made a few little tweaks. But nothing, nothing major there. Stop me if there's questions or comments. So on the, on my page eight, I'm not sure, I'm looking at the table now. So I tried to, so this is table one on my page eight. I was trying to incorporate the sketch plan review into that application requirement table. I would want to reformat this personally, but anyway, this was just an attempt to get it in there, so you could see, and see if that works for you. Maybe we don't need it, but I thought it was nice. We talked about adding that column in there last time, so, does this work okay?
It's a good visual.
Yeah, everything's all in one place.
So I'll leave it as is unless I hear anything otherwise. Okay, so now on page nine. I, we had somebody else in the office review things, so there are a few little minor things. So under, right above section 2.5, the, one of the comments was, you'll see I deleted "that they wish", and I, what does that mean? So I, we got rid of kind of that weird vague language, and we just said "in accordance with". It just sounds better. So that's what that is. So sketch plan review, this is that second half of what you had inserted the last time, and I kind of built it out a little bit more to be, again, consistent with the next sections. Wanted to question though, what I wrote, for good or for bad, sketch plan review is required for major subdivisions. I wanted to just clarify whether you want it optional in all cases, whether you want to require it in certain cases, or what. You know, I just wanted to make sure, because I wasn't totally sure where you were going with it. When do you want sketch plan to be either required or just encouraged?
Probably required.
In all cases, do you think, or just with the bigger ones?
Well, for, for a major, they're going to have to submit all of that information anyways. So the sketch plan, in my mind, was just a way for an applicant to come in and say, hey, this is what we're thinking. Before they spend all of that money.
Be informal.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
I've maybe changed it to recommended.
I guess I just want to clarify, yeah, you know.
I think required is, is good, just because it gives us a heads up too.
It gives everybody on the same page about what to expect, I think.
And how about minor? Do we want them? Do we not want to go through this sketch review phase for minors? Usually that's one or two lots, it's kind of small stuff. Usually there's not a lot going on.
It helps to clarify, in everybody's mind, once you put things down on paper, I think it's clarifying.
For a minor though, that would just be administrative, so that would just go through the administrator.
That's true. It's sort of, that's true, and when I was writing this, I was like, that doesn't make a lot of sense. So again, I just want to make sure I'm in the same direct place here with the language.
I mean, oh, go ahead.
No, it's okay, I'm sorry.
Oh no, I was thinking if, with the sketch plan review, even if it's a minor, the administrator could see right up front, okay, I see some issues here, or whatever, before they spend a lot of money on permitting.
So you could require it as an administrative review, administrative sketch plan review, for the minors?
That's my thinking.
Okay.
I don't know.
The minor on the table, really, it's, it's kind of the same stuff, except you have to have it prepared by somebody with certifications. So.
For the final one, or for the preview?
For the final.
Well, yeah, subdivision application requirement. So you're still going to require all that stuff for a minor anyways?
Right.
Do you want him to come in and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this? Or, I mean, honestly, it's up to them if they want to spend the money to prep it. I'm, I'm just throwing that out there.
That's true.
They're going to have to have some sort of sketch.
Some kind of drawing, even if it's just a pencil drawing, I suppose.
I mean, we could be silent on the minors. We could encourage sketch plan, or, or we could require it, you know. I, I see some simplicity that just, they go right to the final subdivision, but then they're going to be working with the administrative person.
Right.
If there's any issues or whatever.
For the minor, yeah.
Whatever works for you all. It's fine with me.
I guess I'm okay. I mean, I think definitely for the major, there should be, but for the minor, I don't know. I mean, it might.
I think we could, maybe, I mean, maybe just do recommended.
Yeah.
Just, you know, change the language, put a second line item, which says sketch plan review for minor subdivisions recommended.
Okay.
Yes, sketch plan review for major subdivisions required.
And that might cover us too, say if they come back with a full plan that we're like, whoa, this isn't going to work.
Right.
You know, Lisa, well, you could have came in with a, with a sketch plan review, so.
All right.
All right, I'm good with that.
That sounds good. Below that is sub, number B, application requirements. I think the language you had last time had 21 days, so the application needs to come in, they need to give it to the administrative officer at least so many days before the, the meeting. It used to say 21. I changed it to 28, because that's what you're calling for with the final subdivision process.
Okay.
It could go either way, but I wanted to be consistent, just for kicks, so, is that okay?
Yeah, I think that's.
I like it.
Yeah.
Okay. And, yeah, so at the end of the sketch plan review, that, the last little comment there is recommendations. So it's really just, hey, I'll have to think about these things for, when you come in with your final application. And it could be as simple as your meeting minutes have those recommendations written out, or it could be a separate thing, but it's probably best in the minutes, I think. Just keep it light and easy.
Sure.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
And are there any, happy to make any changes to that section if something's not clear, or any other comments on that section?
I think we're good.
Okay. So then, I don't, there's not a ton of other changes. There's a few more I want to walk you through. On the next page, 10, section 2.6, I renumbered some things, because I added that sketch plan in there. Not a lot of changes. One, the one change though that's important is towards the bottom, under that E, appeal. We, somebody in the office was like, wait a minute, and so we, we did get an opinion from the LCT, and we had initially written in that the planning commission was going to do all this stuff, all the reviews, except for the administrative piece. The LCT does not think the planning commission is enabled to look at the appeal. So if there's a, so your administrative officer, they might approve a minor subdivision. Let's say the neighbor doesn't like it, they appeal it. Who reviews that? So the LCT is saying you need either a zoning board of adjustment, or you need a development review board to do that appeal piece. So I'm like, darn. So we, we changed that because of that opinion. There's at least two ways to deal with it. You could, so some, a lot of towns, Reading comes to mind, the planning commission and the zoning board are the same people. They just sort of put on a different hat, depending on the, the thing. So that's what I was writing in, sort of thinking that would make the most sense here, probably. You know, the, the other option is that you could be, it could still be the same people, the planning commission and the DRB, and then the DRB, that, the development review board, just does everything. And I don't know that it really matters, because it's all, you're all the same people, but.
I think if you don't change that first word, it's going to be met with a lot of.
People are going to be confused.
They're going to see that zoning, and they're going to be like, nope.
That's a good point, yeah. So do you think development review board is better?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I will need to change this, so it's going to be basically this DRB that does everything. Again, I'm assuming it's all you, the same people, but you'll just have a different hat to wear.
Right. Do we have to have like, close a hearing and a planning commission?
Do we have to change clothes?
You know, some, so Reading is my example. They'll have instances where the planning commission does one thing and the zoning board does another thing, and that all happens in the same night. They would have two separate agendas, and they'd have two separate things. But like, you know, they might notice the planning commission for 6 o'clock or whatever, and then the zoning board to follow immediately, or to 6:30 or something like that.
Right.
And then they just did open one, close that, open the next one, you know.
It's actually operated as two separate though.
They really, I think they do.
You couldn't put it in part of the agenda for the planning commission.
Right, you, you would need to kind of keep some level of separation, yeah.
Yeah, it's just how we do it for flood hazard review.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, it's the same kind of deal, but we might want to revisit the flood thing to just be consistent with this DRB thing. But other than that, I don't think there would be any change.
Okay.
Anyway, so I didn't even think about the, the big Z word.
Yeah, no, we're not ready.
I think people are already going to see this as a push towards that, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good point. All right, so we'll make that change, those changes. Let's see. So there was a question on, on the next page, page 11, there was a question, what does completed mean? So we're talking about, each approval for a final subdivision shall contain a time limit within which improvements shall be completed.
Which page are you on, did you say?
11.
This is page 11.
In the pink area?
Yeah, under G there, that little pink thing, that, there's, there was a question about that. And so, I don't know that it's explicitly clear in here, to be honest with you, but, so I think what that means is, let's say you have a major subdivision, and they're putting in a road, and the road, you know, one of the conditions is the road needs to be up to specifications. So this would give them a time period to build that road. And so I think the, you know, what's complete is, is the road substantially complete? You know, and that's not always easy to know maybe when that is, but presumably they've excavated, they put down the base material, they put down the top coat, or something like that, right?
So would that something be, for that example, you would have, you know, a phasing plan that would be submitted for either in, in review or in the application, that you could say, okay, if it's completed, you're only planning on doing phase one, which is just getting your initial drive in, getting the one, the first, maybe the first lot, and then extending the road and getting the lots two and three down the line. So maybe it's incorporated in a phasing schedule.
Could be. The applicant could say, geez, that's an awful lot of road to build, I don't know, I don't like that, you know, and so, yeah, maybe there could be a phased approach. Or maybe the condition is just something like, said something more nuanced.
Yeah.
But anyway, just to answer the question, that's what I think complete means.
Yeah, that can be vague, right.
And if there's special circumstances, there often are, you know, the decision could probably talk about that, give them a little bit of flexibility or something. And then I add at the end of that, that the administrative officer is authorized to basically extend the timeframe, if needed. Is that okay?
Yep.
So again, that could be, again, road or whatever it is, I can't get a contractor, you know, I need more time, okay, here's, here's another year. Any, any questions on that? Okay. So now on Article three, I'm going to skip ahead to section 3.2, unless there's any questions on that table, under 3.1. Any more changes there?
The only thing is, somewhere else in here, properties larger than 50 acres did not need full perimeter. It just says, well, it says proposed lots, so be sure, right, okay, never mind. Not the entire property.
Do we need to clarify here? I'm not seeing it, but I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, 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 it's the first line, 3.2A. No, I think we're okay.
Okay.
It's just talking about the lots, not the, not the lot that you're subdividing from.
Yeah, we were thinking the big lots, and we chose 50 acres, don't need that extra cost of the survey for, for those big lots, right? So we're good there?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
So under that, the old B got deleted, and then the new B got added, which is fine, and I don't think there's really any, maybe, just a little punctuation change, nothing, nothing more than that, really. That good with everybody still? So I don't have anything else until page 16. Is there anything you want to talk about in between, you know, on those pages in between? Nothing else changed there. I don't, or maybe, I think I updated a citation, section 4.8 to 1.4. Anything else?
I know we discussed, let's see, H, pedestrian and bicycle accommodations in the villages. Wondering if, well, I guess, is there any room for a large subdivision in the village? I guess in the future, it could be, you never know. Maybe keep that in there.
You know, my thinking is it's rare, very rarely going to come up.
Right.
If you, if you did have a big one, a major subdivision in a village, assuming there's a spot for it, it might be nice to have this.
Yeah.
But I think it's very rare.
Right. I mean, there is, there's some land, I guess in Proctorsville, behind Ferrugia's, that's a big lot.
I mean, I'm open, but, you know, I think this isn't there for those, probably never going to happen, large developments in, in the village.
Right.
Is that okay to leave it in there?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so this was, we talked about this, so this, page 16, under section 4.1, the new letter C, that's going to change. We're going to call that a development review board.
That's right.
The evil Z word. And, yeah, I'll have to change that throughout. That'll change a couple of things, in terms of what the planning commission does versus, anyway, the DRB is going to basically do all, all of the reviews now. And some of the changes on the next page are that, so that'll change again to development review board. So you'll see more of those changes in the next version. And honestly, I think that's really it. Unless there's anything else that you all want to see different.
I think it's wonderful what you've done.
Yeah, I think it kind of brings everything together. I don't know if anybody else has any other changes, or.
We could probably make changes until whatever.
Sorry, go ahead Bruce.
It's very good work.
Okay.
Thanks Bruce.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so then we'll just, once we get.
So those changes could be done fairly quickly.
Yep.
You know, I don't, I don't know. Soon, next week, let's call it.
Okay.
And, because I think you were talking about some hearings or meetings or something coming up.
Yeah, we were going to do a, like an open forum again, I think it was on the 23rd of April.
Yep.
Is that something you may attend, that you have time for?
I think so.
Yep. We'll keep it, I mean, I think it's good to keep it rather than a hearing, less, give people one more chance, and then, I mean, I don't see it changing too much unless people come with pitchforks, but then, at that, this point, I mean, what's there to change? Unless there's something big that people think and we discuss it.
We'll find out.
We'll find out. Yeah.
So yes, the 23rd does work, and so I could have a revised draft next week, fairly soon.
Sure.
So would we put it out there for public to read ahead of time?
Yes.
Yeah, as soon as you.
We're going to do an announcement of some sort, postcards or something, we thought?
I would like to do a postcard to all the, all the resident, well, and this affects people that are not voters as well.
Right.
Any property owner should probably get a notification and have the opportunity to read the proposal.
That we could tell them that. That we could tell them that the information or this is available to read online?
Yeah.
As well as you could come in or request one at the town hall?
Yes. So how do we do that, like?
I can coordinate that, I can do the card, get it printed, and Diane, I've got the, I can take it to the post office and get it taken, I've done it for the post, or the fire department, so it's pretty easy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah. We got a bulk mail stamp and all that with the town, so...
And I'll get something in the Vermont Journal, see if they can do like an article, yeah?
And the Cavendish Facebook page?
Yep, talk to Margot, she'll get it out there.
Okemo Valley TV.
Oh, yeah. How would that work with the Okemo Valley TV, do they?
They have a PSA board.
Oh, great, okay. And then, you know, after that, start, you know, do like, hearing, have our Planning Commission hearing in June, assuming, you know, this all goes well.
Or even if it doesn't.
If it doesn't, I mean, we're kind of committed.
Go from there, yeah.
Yeah. And then, so that's June, and then we hand it off to the select board. We probably won't meet in July, because nobody's around, or no, that's, is it July or August, we don't meet, but, yeah. Give them time to look it over and...
So we're having this meeting, and I'm sorry, I was only half listening to what you said, I apologize.
April twenty-third.
April twenty-third, that's that, and then we should have another meeting where people have an opportunity to come to us at a regular meeting and make changes or suggestions as well. This meeting on the twenty-third is just a casual get-together, it's not something that's, that's an official Planning Commission meeting, correct?
Correct.
So if there were any changes or suggestions or anything to be made, we need to meet again?
Not necessarily, because the Planning Commission hearing, that's when that all happens.
Okay.
Because we could still, we can make changes then, yeah. And then, and then I think, do we have, if we make major changes, we have to have another hearing? Say if we have our first PC hearing and then...
Potentially, yeah, yeah. If you make major changes, you probably should have a second one, but it kind of depends on the scope of the changes.
Yeah, I mean, would you agree that, you know, the Planning Commission hearing is the time to, for people to make comments and make changes with that?
It's a good time for, yeah, I mean, that is intended for that, so that's when people come in and comment.
Right.
Could you have another meeting in between? You could. Maybe that gives you an opportunity to make, you know, some more informal changes before you get to the
Sure.
The hearing, so whatever works for you.
Yeah, I mean, whatever people want to do.
What time are we doing the open forum?
What day of the week is it?
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday. I think we said it was the same time, right, six thirty?
Are we doing it here, are we doing it?
Probably at the fire hall.
At the fire hall again?
Yeah, I'll see if it's open.
Do they do their meetings on Wednesday, or is it Tuesday over there?
Over in Proctorville?
In Proctorville.
That's a good question, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's either Tuesday or Wednesday.
I think it's, yeah, it's earlier, so yeah, Tuesday, I think, maybe. Okay. Yes, it is Tuesday, I remember Becky saying they were, they ran, they got to a call on a Tuesday, because they were right there. Last Tuesday, and they had their meeting, so it was able to jump right in and go, I think it was Tuesday.
So hopefully that works.
Alright, yeah, I'll contact Bob Glidden. And Chris Marks, too, he seems to respond quickly, so...
So I'll put a postcard together and put, I guess, just a link to the town website. And won't, unless they're, you know, by the time you have that put together, unless there's a direct link to the document. But I'll wait until that comes out before we send the cards, but I can get Diane to print the labels and everything that we need.
Great.
Wonderful, thank you.
And we do have a budget, too.
Yeah, so that was my next question, who do I bill for the printing?
Yeah, I don't think we have a ton of money, but I'm sure it would cover that.
It's gonna be like fifty bucks, and then the cards will probably be another seventy, eighty for postage.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, well, I mean, we can, I guess, discuss if we want to have, after the public forum, if we want to have another meeting before the hearings, I guess, see how it goes.
Yeah, because we have our regular meeting two weeks after that.
That's right.
For May.
Are we having a meeting right after, like, are we gonna be, after the open forum ends, do we continue on our meeting then at that point?
No.
That's just gonna take the place of it? No, no, we'll have our meeting the following, or whenever, in May. Oh, in May, yeah. It's the week, okay, so then at that one, we can decide whether or not we're gonna, you know, or we can that up to, you know, public for comments and stuff. Yeah, we could have, yeah, I mean, we could certainly have this on the agenda for the May meeting, and then if, until people, you know, at the here, or at the forum, they come to our next meeting if you want, you know, then we're gonna...
I like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then we could still...
Two opportunities.
Yes.
We could still have the hearing in June or July. So it'd be nice to kind of like, get it moving, just see what happens.
You know, unless there's a special town meeting, though, you know, you have time, because it's March of next year's.
That's right.
You have a lot of time, so.
Yes.
Nice to get it done, nice to get it off your plate, but yeah, you do have plenty of time.
But they tend to, I know, it's like, March comes so quickly.
It's true.
Alright, is there anything else on this? I think we're good. Okay, oh, one thing, probably after, I think our town plan is, is it two thousand eight, I think it's...
Sounds vaguely familiar.
Yeah, we should probably, and I know Martha had did like a town plan update.
Yeah, she did a review and sort of said, these are the areas, yeah, you maybe want to think about changing or updating, yeah.
Right, and we would like you guys to help us, but you probably, should we be applying for grants for you to?
Probably would, that would be helpful, I think, and so the one round just went in, but we have an opportunity in the fall, so I think in the fall, I think that'd be a good time to
Yes.
Look into that.
Yeah, like, maybe we can kind of start, because it's gonna take a couple of years. I mean, we don't want to like, burden ourselves, we could do like a section at a time, and but I still have that review, I'll, well, yeah, this summer.
Yeah.
Early fall.
Yeah, we have that, too, we can recirculate that, but yeah, I think a grant would be a great idea.
Now, is that something you guys would do, or, you know, in conjunction with us?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think, I think it will come around in September, I think, timeframe, so honestly, we should be talking about it in August-ish timeframe, to just kind of get our ducks in a row.
Right.
Figure out we know, make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, sounds good. Typically, well, August if we're not gonna have a meeting, but maybe July or whatever.
Yeah, maybe earlier.
Yeah.
Whatever. We can probably, I'm sure we can figure it out in September, just get, you do need the Planning Commission and the Select Board to agree to apply, so.
Gotcha.
Takes a little bit of
Yep.
Work.
Yeah, I think that would be important, because that's a pretty big, you know...
It does take a bit, yeah. Okay, well, I'm gonna add that to my list.
Okay. Oh, I still owe you that, for the energy plan, I gotta, just to, just to like, clean it up. There's like boxes that need...
We were gonna do that, right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, you need anything from me, or then kind of meld, merge it into the town plan, the new energy plan?
Yep, yep, yep. I kind of think I forgot about that.
Yeah, me too.
It's on my list now, too.
Okay. Do you need anything from me for that, or?
At the moment, no, if we do, though, we know where to find you.
Yeah, it's pretty, once you see it.
It's pretty straightforward, yeah.
It's not that much, but...
Yeah, it's more formatting stuff.
Formatting, yeah.
Yep.
Alright. Okay, well, I think that's it for us.
Great, that's all I got.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Happy to help.
This would be tough to do on our own.
It's fussy stuff, so, yeah, we're happy to help.
The detail man there.
Yes. Yeah, I really appreciate it.
Martha's the detail person. She caught some of these things, so.
Martha, the detail woman also.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Alright. Thanks. Okay, so we are on to old business, new business. I don't have any, well, old business, I guess Fletcher Farm Trails, they, Lowly Area Sport Trails got a forty-seven thousand dollar grant from RT recreational trails program grant.
That's awesome.
And then another seven thousand from Vermont Mountain Bike Association.
Great, great.
Yeah, so, but that money, it's federal money, so there's a chance it could get clawed back.
Spend it.
Spend it now, I know, so we'll see, hopefully not. And, so yeah, construction will start, they can't use those funds, we can't start until July, but there's other work they can do. So, and then under new business, we'll have a flood hazard hearing next meeting. And, where is it on here? It's in Proctorsville, on Mountain View Avenue. That's off of, right past the Goodman's, the left. He wants to rebuild a garage that was torn down, it's in the, it's in the flood, not the flood hazard, but the
Flood plain?
Flood plain, yeah. Yep, so he'll have to go through, it's just like a one-car garage.
All out, what are you gonna cook?
Enough for all of us? Yeah. We're all hungry, Bruce.
You want some quinoa and stir-fried veggies?
Sounds delicious. Great. We'll be up in a bit. Okay. Anyway, it's a one-car garage, there was a building there, and it got torn down, but they have photos. So, but that'll be next month, I'll send everybody the information. And then, Bambino University, they have an Act Two Fifty application that, it's gonna be, what, forty, forty-five to sixty students? And the restaurant was, I think, permitted for like over a hundred. I saw the application, it says they're gonna do preschool through twelfth grade, is that true?
Oh, twelfth grade?
It says it on there, when you go through the one of the documents, it says twelve grade.
It's a big bambino.
So I'm like, I don't know if it's, if that was a mistake, or if that...
No, I don't think it was.
That is what they're going for?
I think so.
Wow. Okay. Cool. Yeah. Yeah. School options. So I don't know if we want to comment on it, I mean, they haven't come in or anything.
Where's this going to be?
At the old restaurant, Black River Produce, next to Black, Old Black River Produce.
Okay, so Niels?
Yes.
And what, well, it still says talking about, wait till we see the application.
Well, we do have one, so...
Did you send it to us, I think? Yeah, I read it this afternoon.
Yeah, I did send it, it was kind of late, but, I mean, we can always table it, too, till next meeting.
No, I can, I can open the email and look at it, if you want to talk about it now.
Has this group done this before? I mean, is this part of a series of schools, or is it a one-off?
I think it's just a single school.
And who is, who is the, who is doing it?
It's, I'm not sure...
I saw the name, but I mean, is there an agenda of any sort?
Well, there's like this Act Two Fifty application, and there are some, you know, sketch plans, and, you know, they're gonna put a fence in, it's pretty simple, yeah. It's not too, not many major. No. And they also have, it's in the flood plain, so they have to go through. But it's not gonna be, we don't have to have a hearing for it, because it's not in the floodway, believe it or not.
But it's in the flood plain?
Yes. So Rick, he approved it, but he basically conditioned that if there's a flood warning...
They have to evacuate.
They have to, yeah, the kids can't go to school, yeah, so. Yep. I mean, other than that, I mean, I don't see any huge issues. I mean, it's gonna be less municipal services than a restaurant. I don't know if we can really judge on their program, I don't know what their kind of school it is, so it's just...
It's not our, it's not our business, right?
Yeah. I think it's in nature, they're gonna do like a nature, a nature school.
When that's operated as a restaurant, we've had many, many, many issues with the putting towels and grease down the drains, which plug, which plugs the pumping station that's between the two buildings. That's something, well, Rick, I'm sure Rick, that's something kind of talk about with them, they said they abuse the municipal sewer.
Right, yeah, he did a municipal impact forum, and it was all positive, so...
Rick did that?
I believe he did, yes.
Okay. So... No, I did not see any of that, so I'll have to go look it up.
Okay.
I'll be quiet till I read it.
Yeah, let me make sure, I thought I saw it, but, so, I mean, we can either write a letter in support, or write a letter if we have concerns, or we can table it, let you know, let it just kind of, we probably should write a letter either way.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to read it, so I do want to go through it.
Yep.
I think we all need to, need a minute, because I just got it today.
And won't it affect our own public school enrollment, or is this? Where do the kids come from?
It's a very specialized school. It's just, it's like a nature.
A nature school.
Just send it for me.
And it's in lieu of public education?
I would assume.
It's just one or the other?
I think it's a private, yeah. Did they come to the Select Board at all?
I don't think so, I think it was mentioned, but I don't think they came to us.
I can invite them to come to our next meeting.
And tell us about it.
Yeah. That would be...
That'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good, that's a legend.
Yeah. We can get them a letter. Yep. Okay, I'll do that. And then I'll send you on the flood hazard review. We're waiting for a letter from the state. So, once we get that, we're hoping that we'll have a separate hearing next month, so... Yeah, same time as our Planning Commission meeting. Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay. Any other business, Planning Commission members, anybody?
Not for me.
Okay. So getting back to the forum, I mean, I don't think we have to do food this time.
No, I agree with you.
That was, yeah, let's just have the, unless anybody has any other options, but I don't want to put more work on Diane and everybody. So, keep it simple. Okay, anything else? Alright, motion adjourned?
I so moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, thanks, Bruce.